Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to council meeting. It's eight fifteen. We took a brief recess. Do do some audio issues for live streaming and we're not a hundred percent sure we're able to livestream the rest of this. So if you're at home and this is a recording, well, anyway, we're recording it no matter what. That's all that matters. We may or may not be able to livestream it, but this meeting will be recorded. Okay, thank you for patience, although if you're sitting at home, it was nothing more than a second. All right, so we're going to go to our legislative agenda this evening. We have three resolutions and we have three ordinances. So we're going to start resolutions. Item twelve, the agenda. Item A, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning approving a license agreement for a temporary sign on Bully Rock Parkway.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce resolution carries five zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty. Counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland pursuant to the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland in sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter for approval of a license agreement to place a temporary sign on Bully Rock Parkway right of way. Council have a motion to approve counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Council President and Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes, Mayor, the right-of-way sign is to be placed in the sales area for the Scenic Vista subdivision. And the temporary time will be allotted until the last home is sold. Once that's sold, it needs to be removed within thirty days regardless of it being built or not. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote on this resolution. Roll call vote on counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty. Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, City Council, counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty is adopted by council. We're going to go to item B. Counter resolution, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning... Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning approving assignment of a license agreement previously approved by Resolution twenty twenty-three seventeen for nine thirty-two Warren Street.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce a counter resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction of this counter resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to carry the counter resolution or motion introduce counter resolution carries five zero and affirmative. This will be counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland pursuant to sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland to approve assignment of a lease agreement previously approved by Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash seventeen for nine thirty-two Warren Street. Council have a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones and that motion is seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes, essentially, this license is a transference of ownership to Ms. Queen. She is taking over the right-of-way of a curb cut at her location on Warren Street. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Council, we will do a roll call vote on this resolution. Counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one is approved by council. Our final resolution, counter resolution, Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning authorizing administration to sign a net benefit letter for Amtrak.
Council have a motion by the Council President. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce a counter resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduce counter resolution carries five zero and affirmative. This will be Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-two, two thousand twenty-four dash three-two. A resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland pursuant to sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland to authorize the mayor to proceed with the Federal Railroad Association net benefit determination as it relates to Gene Roberts Memorial Park, David R. Craig Park, and other city-owned property. Council have a motion to adopt counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-two.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Council President.
So what this is, everybody knows Amtrak's coming to town and they need to use city property to store some of their equipment. And we just, this authorizes the city administration to go into negotiations with Amtrak so we can have a net benefit use of the property and that we get something out of it.
Very good. Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Council will have a roll call vote on counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-two. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, City Council counter resolution two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-two is adopted by council. Very good. Thank you so much, Council. We will now go on with our agenda this evening. We'll go to item thirteen, which is ordinances, and we do have three ordinances and they're all second readings. And the first one is going to be ordinance eleven sixty-six and that is Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I move to introduce ordinance number eleven sixty-six concerning approving the renewal of a lease agreement between the city and Go Havertide Grace LLC in the second reading.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas to introduce an ordinance for second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce ordinance eleven sixty-six on second reading. Is there any questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance for second reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce ordinance eleven sixty-six for second reading carries five zero and affirmative. Eleven sixty-six is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland, sections thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six of the Havertide Grace City Charter to approve renewal of a lease between the city and Go Havertide Grace LLC for the use of city right-of-way. Council have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven sixty-six on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments before the roll call? Councilmember Shenegas.
Well, this land will be well-used as a frontage for the restaurant that's going in on Union Avenue. Our vintage cafe. It has been utilized in the past and it's very beneficial for the city and the restaurant to be in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions from the council? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on ordinance eleven sixty-six. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, ordinance eleven sixty-six is adopted on second reading. Item B, Councilmember Shenegas.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce ordinance number eleven sixty-seven concerning amending chapter two oh five zoning related to accessory dwelling units in the second reading.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas to introduce ordinance eleven sixty-seven on second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Jones. This is an introduction of an ordinance for second reading, introduction of eleven sixty-seven. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The introduction of ordinance eleven sixty-seven on second reading carries five zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland in sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend chapter two oh five zoning. Council have a motion to adopt eleven sixty-seven on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones and that is seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
Essentially, the amendment is to put the language into the ordinance as square footage of the primary dwelling fifty percent. And that's basically what we're changing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Council, we will do a roll call vote on ordinance eleven sixty-seven, second reading. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Ordinance eleven sixty-seven is adopted on second reading by roll call count of five zero and affirmative. Item C, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. I move to introduce on second reading ordinance eleven sixty-nine concerning budget amendment twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. This is the introduction of ordinance eleven sixty-nine on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ordinance eleven sixty-nine is introduced with a five zero affirmative vote on second reading. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution and the local government article, the annotated code of Maryland and sections thirty-seven of Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to address the reallocation of funds for the city of Havertide Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Council have a motion to adopt eleven sixty-nine on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Booker and that motion is seconded by Council President. Again, this is ordinance eleven sixty-nine on second reading. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the pleasure of the viewing audience, this is basically giving funds to the downtown businesses for promoting their businesses this coming season. This is utilizing the old rad fund proceeds. It was requested by the city, by the Chamber of Commerce. Director Johnson, can you maybe speak a little bit to how the businesses are able to access this funding?
Yes. So, to be clear, Councilman Robertson, this funding is, well, part of it will be going to my department and then the Chamber of Commerce will be receiving an amount that they requested through a grant. The funding doesn't go directly to the businesses. The funding goes to the Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber of Commerce has a marketing and promotions campaign that they will start hopefully tomorrow. And it'll take us through the holiday season and also through the construction season for the downtown. So this money can be used for specific purposes and it's to do with promotions, marketing of anything in the Main Street area.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other questions or comments on ordinance eleven sixty-nine? Okay, Council, roll call vote. Council President, how say ye?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
By roll call vote of five zero and affirmative, ordinance eleven sixty-nine concerning approving budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash zero three for the promotion of downtown activities is adopted on second reading and approved. Okay, Council, thank you very much. That's it for ordinances. We're going to go to item fourteen, old business. Item A. Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. At the last meeting that we had, the Council President requested with the support of the City Council to have administration draft a letter in response to option number two for the state highways, this plan for addressing some of our traffic challenges that we have on Route forty. So there were several conditions that, or concerns, I should say, the City Council had and also several citizens that we had that spoke at that meeting. And the request was for us to draft a letter that supported option two but also requested that those concerns be looked into in a serious and, you know, intentional manner. So Director Borsier actually drafted the letter that you see in front of you. I think he put it together very well. As you heard Mr. Place mention earlier, we believe it captures everything that was discussed at that meeting. So you're voting on the approval of that letter that's in your packets.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. I'm going to leave this up to the Council President if he wants to call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I do call for a motion, a motion to accept the letter because I fully believe that what's written in there was, it was well-written and it gives us the opportunity to basically have the public comment that's we're requesting and work sessions in order to move forward. We all agree that it's not an ideal situation. But the lesser of the four evils, I do make a motion that we accept the letter.
Council have a motion by the Council President to accept the letter to the State Highway Administration. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Councilmember Booker.
And, you know, kind of to echo what Council President Ringsec is saying, this, this is a problematic area. This is not going to be something that's going to be an overnight solution. Hats off to Director Borsier for the, for the work on the letter. So there's more work to be done, but I think this is a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booker. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go and do a regular voice, a voice vote on this one. I have a motion by Council President, seconded by Councilmember Booker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to approve letter carries five zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, Council. And we're going to go back to Dr. Ritchie for item fifteen, new business.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So for your consideration this evening, there is a letter of support that we would like you to approve. The city received a placemaking grant from DHCD and that grant was focused on doing community bus shelters that had an artistic sense to them that qualified for this grant. But in discussions internally, we wanted to see if there was other projects that might be better suited for the use of those funds. So we reached out to DHCD to see if they'd be interested or willing to entertain potentially changing the scope of that project. And they indicated that they are, but they would like in a letter from the city with the approval of City Council formally making that request to do that. So we're looking at pivoting from these placemaking bus shelters and focusing more on pedestrian crosswalks. And specifically, the primary crosswalk that we've targeted is the one that leads from the parking lot that's right out in front of this building that the school system owns to the Star Center itself. So I'm sure you've noticed that we've placed those large flower pots there to try and act as barricades to prevent vehicles from driving onto the sidewalk because that has been a chronic issue. That intersection we've identified just as concerning and one that we feel that the pedestrian safety could be better addressed if we make some changes there. So we're considering maybe a artistic-type crosswalk, some additions to create a sense of feeling, a sense of place that is safe for the people to gather and cross the roads. And that's an important caveat to this specific grant is it has to be tied to pedestrian safety or to public safety. So we would like to pursue addressing that crosswalk with the support of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. Do I have a motion to, well, first of all, any questions for Dr. Ritchie? Councilmember Jones.
So what you're saying is that we would, where would these bus shelters, we would have specific bus shelters in certain places? That's what the initial grant was, correct?
Correct. The initial grant was for, for bus shelters, placemaking bus shelters. So in lieu of doing those, we want to make the request to DHCD.
And were there going to be multiple bus shelters throughout our area or just in particular places? Was it... Was it, I mean, how many bus shelters?
Director Boursier would know that better than I.
It was planned for two bus shelters. One was gonna be located on Revolution in front of the Family Dollar, and then one on Atsigo in front of McDonald's, or on the side of McDonald's.
And if we, if we use, we have to do either or. Like, I mean, I see the value of having bus shelters. So, you know, and I, for me, wanna, I'm not, I don't know the crosswalks, if it's something that's super critical at this point. I don't know. That's just my thoughts. I mean, I do see the value of having bus shelters.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I tend to agree, you know, that bus shelters are important, especially on Revolution. It seems to be a pretty crowded area, you know, all throughout the day at different times. Reading this letter, it does say that the city plans to work with Harford County Department of Community Service, Harmerstown, and the Arts Collective as local artists' foundations to engage the community to design and construct two bus shelters as gateways to our community. So is the plan to, I guess, use this coalition to address the bus shelter need and possibly some funding and some help from the county as opposed to DHCD?
So the, that is actually, that language is an artifact of the original application that we actually need to change that language in there, because it's pivoting from bus shelters to the crosswalk in front of the Star Center. So it really is a either-or proposition. We haven't been approved by DHCD to switch this grant, but they requested that we have a letter that has the support of city council for them to consider switching this grant, or switching the focus of this grant. So it would be from, pivoting from bus shelters to applying for a grant for the same level of funding to address that crosswalk.
And I tend, just, I'm sorry, one more second.
You're right.
I do tend to agree that the intersection could use some help. My son walks that way for middle school every day, and that's the one place that I'm most nervous about him crossing. And, you know, yeah, I see the games and students coming and going all throughout the afternoon and evening. And as you know, the twilight hours are always a cause of concern, too, for that crossing. So I do see both projects as being rather essential, I think, for pedestrian safety. I just tend to think if we already have the funding to do one, you know, it kind of makes sense to maybe do that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Council President?
Well, I was gonna ask, excuse me, do we need to correct the letter as written now? Come back and revisit it?
So I don't think the council needs to make a motion on the specific language of the letter. I think it's really, the council is giving us the authority to send a letter in the spirit requesting the change of the focus of the grant.
Councilmember Shenegas.
I see the need for the pedestrian walkway. It's very high-trafficed over there, a lot of footprint with people coming for games and sports, et cetera, all of the different types of community events that take place in that area. I think it is very highly visited as opposed to the bus stops. I mean, they're utilized in the mornings, I think, when people go to work and everything. But I think we have, you know, events going on all day throughout the weekend, and there's, I think, a higher need for that public safety aspect.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you.
Councilmember Booker.
Thank you, Mayor. So I pass by that area quite often, right there by Dollar Store and Post Road Liquor on my way. Also, of course, on the other side of Route seven, McDonald's. I always see people who are standing out there waiting for the, for the link, the NTDA link. And it's really, it's kind of as the bus schedule allows. It's morning, you know, there's a lot of people in that, in that area that depend on that. And I go into work, and I just drive past, and I see, I see individuals out there with umbrellas and things of that nature in all weather situations. So I, if the letter currently states, you know, if it stays the two bus stops, that's what I would recommend, is to keep the, keep those there. I'm not in favor of the crosswalk. I'm in favor of the bus stops. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, for full disclosure, the move from bus stops to crosswalk was pushed by me, only because my exposure to bus stops in my travels, bus stops tend to collect trash, graffiti, homeless, illicit drug activity sometimes. Not saying that's necessarily gonna happen in our town, but you just, I thought personally from administrative standpoint, that the crosswalks would have been a better approach. If the council wants to take a different approach, I mean, that's fine, but you gotta give us direction. If someone wants to make a motion to stick with bus stops. I'm just letting you know that's where it came from. That's why we changed the focus of the grant.
I think someone mentioned that we need to, do we need to do this today? Because what I would say to that, what I would ask is like, if that's something you've seen, sure, we may have seen that in cities, but we also see people standing out, you know, needing some cover, and we don't have that in Haverty Grace. So like, what is the, you know, I'd love to, if that's the case, can we, do we have data? Or we should, you know, like?
We can hold off on it if you wanted to, I mean, if we send it to, what's the timelines? I mean, can we wait a couple of weeks?
Tim, do you know if they have a timeline with this? I got the impression that they would like it sooner than later if we do want to change the focus of the grant. Yeah, I don't know if two weeks is a make or break or not.
I mean, I guess the impetus would be on us to move in whatever direction we're gonna go in two weeks if it waits that long, because then we'll have to sign a new agreement and then put out a RFP and all that other stuff. The money will need to be spent by some point in time, so we're just sort of pushing our start date back. I don't necessarily think two weeks matters, but we're also up against the holidays, so.
I mean, I think it's fine to wait another council meeting or so. I mean, as long as a committee takes it up or, so we can discuss options. I mean, it sounds like the council wants to explore it a little bit, so I just, I mean, I'm fine with it. I'm just, I'm just letting everybody know, full disclosure, why we altered course from that to the crosswalk. That's all. So, I mean, but like I say, it's council's pleasure. Councilmember Shenegas.
I just want to add that in my time of living here, the one shelter bus stop that we have did become a homeless camp, and it was an individual that our city did try to help. And that individual decided to just, that that was a spot, and moved in. And I also think that over by Revolution, there's that liquor store. You got it right there, and you got a lot of activity of people that, you know, aren't necessarily, you know, going to work for the buses. They're coming in. So I just want to say that we really need to consider bus coverings as a public safety concern for, yes, we want to care and shelter people, but we also don't want to shelter activity that's not, you know, conducive to a safe-living environment. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Just one more comment. And just remember from there that these shelters can be built in different ways. So, you know, perhaps that's something we need to look at so that it's a cover, and it's not your traditional bench where people lay across, but there are different covers and ways that you can do that so that people have shelter and they have dignity as they're waiting for the buses.
So more like a lean-to type?
There, I've seen different, so it may be something that maybe we want to look at just so that we are making sure that we're serving the citizens of Haverty Grace who need to use that type of transportation.
Thank you.
Council President, do you just want to take no action and maybe have a committee look at it?
I think that's prudent at this time. I'll have the planning committee look at it.
Okay. Maybe the admin committee can bring it up as well.
Possibly, yeah.
Or not, or the SIR or whatever.
SIR, we can talk about SIR, that's fine.
All right, no problem. And we don't, I receive no motion, so is this an agenda item? Council takes no action?
Correct.
So, okay. All right, fair enough. Not a problem. Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. Thank you, Mr. Boursier. And so we have, we have an item B. Dr. Ritchie.
Yes, sir, Mayor, Council. So we have two events for your consideration this evening. I will present them as a consent calendar, if that's all right. I don't think either of them are controversial. So the first event is the Haverty Grace Ice Festival, and that will be February twenty-second of next year, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. downtown. And you will notice in your packet, we do have the footprint for that, and it is the original footprint that we've had it downtown for the last several years. So administration does anticipate that the construction downtown will be completed in plenty of time to have the ice festival there. So it'll be kind of a nice event to showcase the new downtown. And then the second event is the Haverty Grace Mother's Day Market on May tenth of next year, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Franklin Street between Union and St. John. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Council President, consent counter?
Consent counter, and I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? Sir?
No, I just want to, I assume, is Bambi still leading the charge for that ice festival?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think she's done a phenomenal job in the past with that, and everyone downtown seems to really enjoy that. The only caveat would be, hopefully, it's actually cold that day. Some years it is, some years the ice is melting as soon as you put it out there. And then, secondly, that Haverty Grace Mother's Day Market was a huge success last year, so I want to commend the businesses for putting that together and the tourism department for, you know, their help. So, anyway, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? Before you guys vote on this, I want you to know that it's with great confidence that we picked February twenty-second to have the downtown ice festival, that we believe that this project will be completed by then.
It's my birthday week, and it's usually actually snowing around that time, so.
Got you. All right, well, then we'll make it work then, so thank you. Council, on the consent counter, I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you very much, Council. This is approved, these two events are approved, five zero and affirmative. Okay, that'll take us to director's reports, and we're gonna go back to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, colleagues, citizens that are still here. So between now and our next council meeting, there's a whole lot of really great events that are gonna be happening in our city, and I just wanted to give some highlights. So the Great Haverty Grace Oyster Feast is this Saturday, November twenty-third, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It is at the Star Center, and it will have all-you-can-eat food, obviously including oysters, and drink, and live music by No Boundaries. This year, we did something special. We do have VIP tickets. It gets you in an hour early, and you get an additional, you know, hour of food and drink and fun. It appears, I did check on the website before I came over, that the individual VIP tickets are sold out, but there was a table of VIP tickets still left. So if you can get a group of friends together and you want to show up a little early, you can grab that table. But there are plenty of general admission tickets for the 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Wizards of Winter are returning to the Star Center on November thirtieth. It is a fun-filled Christmas holiday rock experience for the whole family. On December seventh, Chris Pinella will be performing at the Star Center for an evening of holiday hits and Christmas classics backed by his twelfth-piece orchestra. And in interesting fact, if you're like me and like Trans-Siberian Orchestra, both Chris Pinella and some of the performers that are in Wizards of Winter also performed with Trans-Siberian Orchestra. And so they're gonna be here in our town. That's pretty awesome. So tickets for all of those events can be purchased at starcentermd.com. And for my next comment, I need to adjust my attire. Holly Jolly First Friday, December sixth. The Christmas parade will begin at 6:00 p.m. The route is slightly different this year. It is gonna start at Union Avenue in St. John, where it always starts, but then it will just continue down St. John, turn right onto Pennington, and end at Union Avenue. Santa Land this year is at the Old Visitor Center at one Pennington Avenue, right there at the end of the parade, where the mayor and Santa will light the big giant Christmas tree. It is up over there, if you want to take a look at it. It looks awesome in that location. Santa will then retire to Santa Land to visit with all the good children of Haverty Grace and hear their Christmas wishes. And remember that visiting Santa Land is entirely free, and you're welcome to take as many pictures with Santa and your family as you would like. So Santa is gonna be at Santa Land several different dates. So obviously, on December sixth for Holly Jolly First Friday, from 7:00 p.m. until the last child is seen that night, Santa and his elves stay until everybody is seen and had a chance to visit. On the seventh, Santa will be there from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. On the fourteenth, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. On the fifteenth, from 2:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. And on the twenty-first, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I've had a lot of questions about this. Mrs. Claus will be joining Santa in the parade and at Santa Land on December sixth. So if you would like your pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus, please make sure to come out December sixth. And there are many, many other great holiday festivities scheduled for December. Director Johnson and her team has worked very hard to put together a really nice, just, several weeks of wonderful Christmas events downtown, stuff that we've never done before. So please go to explorehavertyrgracemd.com to learn all about those. And that concludes my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. We appreciate all the updates. We're gonna go to Director of Planning, Mr. Tim Boursier.
Hi, everybody. Just real quick tonight, I just have some meetings to announce. So tomorrow, just want to remind everybody, we have a public workshop about the single-concept plan up on the properties near 155. This Thursday, that's at six o'clock tomorrow. At seven o'clock this Thursday, we have a planning commission meeting, regularly-scheduled planning commission meeting. And the first Thursday in December, December fifth, would normally be our Board of Appeals meeting, but we don't have anything on the agenda, so that'll be canceled. Otherwise, we won't have this meeting before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boursier. Good evening, Ms. Johnson. Director of Egnob Development Tourism.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens at home. One, thank you to the council tonight for passing ordinance number 1169, the budget amendment. Thank you, Councilman Robertson, for bringing that forward. And I just wanted to reiterate with this funding that part of the funding will be coming to my department for continuous promotion of the holiday season, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. We are happy the Chamber of Commerce has new leadership, as well as the Downtown Merchants Group. So we have formed a strong partnership with both of them, and we are happy to support this initiative that they have. And thank you to Mr. Mayor, because he was in that meeting, and we really do look forward to helping them. It's nice to have a strong private sector partner, and that is what I consider the Haverty Grace Chamber of Commerce. So this partnership is beneficial to us and to the downtown businesses, as well as the city of Haverty Grace. Also, there was a little confusion in the downtown about the funding. This is not the same funding that we use for the facade and tenant fit-out program. We have money in that account. We are still spending money from fiscal year 2022. We have approximately seventeen thousand dollars available. That's a grant through DHCD. And fiscal year 2023 has fifty thousand dollars available. This is also a grant through DHCD. That funding is not here in our budget, it's at DHCD. It is a reimbursement grant. So for all of the businesses or anyone interested, we are always accepting applications for facade and tenant fit-out improvements to the properties. So the grant total is about sixty-seven thousand dollars for anyone that is interested. I only have one application in at the moment, and it has been approved, and we are simply waiting for the business to finish with their improvements. Thank you, Director, or my boss and Director of Administration, Chris Ritchie. We do, from December second to December nineteenth, we have a tent at David Craig Park. It is forty by one hundred and twenty feet. It is big. And this tent will be called Holly Jolly Village. We have all types of activities taking place for approximately two... Uh, we have all types of activities taking place, uh, for approximately two and a half weeks under the tent. So you can find that information on the Explore Haverty Grace website. We have a page called Holly Jolly Days, and all of that information is on that page. But I did want to mention, on Thursday, December fifth, the Harford County Chamber of Commerce, the Haverty Grace Chamber of Commerce, and the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce is having an event that evening. So details to follow. It is a ticketed event. But to see all three organizations come together in the city of Haverty Grace under our new Holly Jolly Village tent, we're very excited about it. So, um, details to follow. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your update on everything.
Absolutely.
And good evening, uh, Mr. Abdi, the Deputy Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members, uh, citizens of Haverty Grace. Uh, the fund balance for the general fund currently stands at, uh, eight million, uh, five hundred thousand, two hundred. This is a, uh, decrease from my last reporting of, uh, four hundred and sixty-six thousand. This is a reflection of revenues, uh, stand at fourteen million, nine hundred and five thousand. Uh, and expenditures, uh, currently standing at eight million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred. Uh, in terms of the, uh, current fund balance for the water and sewer fund, uh, it stands at six million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred. Uh, this is an increase of, uh, a little over one point three million, uh, from my last reporting. Current revenue stands at nine million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred. Uh, and expenditures, uh, stand at, uh, four million, six hundred and forty-three, two hundred thousand. Uh, in terms of the, my last fund, the Marina Fund, the, the current fund balance stands at, uh, seven hundred and two thousand. Uh, this is up from, uh, my last reporting of, uh, four hundred and four thousand. Uh, revenues currently stand at, uh, two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred. Uh, and expenditures stand at, uh, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred. Uh, so that concludes my, uh, financial highlights for this, uh, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate the update. Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Melizer, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Martin, Council President, council members, citizens. Uh, tonight, quick update to the mayor and council. I want to talk about the Marina signs, uh, 155 Waterline Project and Holly Jolly Prep. First, great presentation from Josh Argentino, the new Marina Commission Chair. Uh, did an excellent job, and, um, he did mention the new Marina kiosks and courtesy signs. They arrived this week. They will be installed this week. Um, we haven't installed them yet. Clarification point. Uh, speaking of the Marina, I want to talk about, uh, yacht base manager Steve Young. Uh, Josh mentioned the D N R Grant, Waterway Improvement Grant. He was awarded forty-five thousand dollars. It's a hundred percent coverage with no required matching funds, which is really good news. It's, um, gonna go towards redecking Pier Three, so I know Council President would be happy. Uh, seventh grant earned by Steve, so Bravo Zulu to Steve, uh, job well done to Steve. So the dead boat, um, issue, we have storage issues at the D P W yard, so that's probably why they're sitting. Uh, just to clarify that. I want to thank the residents for their patience and delayed gratification on, um, some of the paving projects going on. Dodging those valve box covers and the manhole lids. While we are waiting on the repaving for finishing up the 155 Waterline Project, which goes from 155 on Juniata past, um, the firehouse there, Firehouse Division One. So, five point seven million dollar project, um, huge accomplishment for small staff and, um, all levels from the citizens, the administration, and everybody working together, led by, um, Director of Capital Projects, Patrick Seipolt, and the crew on ground. Uh, Alan Keith, Shrek, and Dennis did a great job, all working together on that. Lastly, on the topic of holidays, um, as Dr. Ritchie, Mr. Santa presented, we have parade coming up. John Allen, Tony Cochran, Mike Shipley, working on Santa Land, staging. They got the metal frame up. You check it out, you kind of see the progress on how it's going. Um, they engineered some concrete anchoring to hold that thing down. And, uh, have a new guard rail up, you know, safety first, so all the kids get excited. They don't see the shiny tree and go tripping and falling overboard, so. Goal, obviously, is to have everything done by Thanksgiving, so. Last but not least, critical upgrades needed in the Santeri Sewer System. Uh, looking forward to presenting that at next council meeting, and talk about all the good things the crews are doing and have done and have overcome, um, this fiscal year. So shout out to the wastewater crew and staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for the update, E.J. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Chief Kress. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, uh, everyone else, either here or watching in. Uh, I want to, I went to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board meeting last Thursday. It's still amazing to me that, uh, in the county, uh, that includes in Haverty Grace as well, there's twelve hundred school bus violations a month. Twelve hundred a month are still occurring. There's cameras on every bus in Harford County. If you pass the bus with the lights on, you're gonna get, uh, I believe it's a five hundred dollar ticket. And, uh, so it's issued to the registered owner of the vehicle. So it is a, like a red light camera, uh, very similar. So, uh, but it is pretty much like the, the statistics are showing that they're very, very consistent at about twelve hundred violations, uh, per month. So I just want to remind everyone to, uh, you know, they're big yellow, uh, vehicles. So let's watch out for them and keep our kids safe. And, uh, secondly, if you've noticed, our, some of our officers are, uh, Santa-esque right now. They're doing their No Shave November. And, uh, so we're raising money for Special Olympics Maryland. So if anyone wants to, uh, participate and help us out or and help out, uh, Special Olympics Maryland, they can make a donation. We have a couple of different ways you can do that. Uh, we have our plunge team that we're getting ready for the end of January. And then, uh, we have a super plunger, Joe Alton, who is, uh, also has a page up. So you can make donations if you're impressed with any of the, uh, the beards that are going on. It drives me too crazy. I can't do it. So, uh, I just give my money, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, great. So we're gonna move on. Item seventeen, just a few comments from the mayor's office. As you've heard, uh, Dr. Ritchie mention and, and Ms. Johnson, there's been a lot of work going on right now to prepare a good number of events and activities for our citizens to participate in and enjoy, uh, from now until the end of the, end of the holidays. So again, we have, you know, we have new things going on at David Craig Park with, uh, big tents. Um, vendors and crafts, um, happening there. We have a new location for the Santa Land that we think is gonna be, you know, a really, a great place for it, uh, new tree lighting. Uh, we're pivoting on a lot of the ways we do, uh, the traditional things this year, only because of the disruption with the construction downtown, which we fully anticipate should be finished by, uh, February, hopefully, before the ice parade starts. But again, we're working hard to make sure that everybody has a great holiday. And, you know, just a few, you know, speed bumps in the road doesn't mean we can't all get together and enjoy and support our downtown businesses and, and be with our friends and neighbors. And, and there's a lot of things going on at the Star Center as well, a lot of shows, a lot of programs. Oyster Feast, again, is, is this Saturday, as Dr. Ritchie said. And I, I know this sounds like the typical, uh, advertising slogan, uh, slogan, uh, "Tickets are almost gone, hurry up." But actually, I was talking to my manager, Bambi, today, and tickets are almost gone. So I mean, if there's like, like fifty left. So if you're sitting at home and you're hearing this, uh, we usually cap it at five hundred and fifty people, around that number, just so it's enjoyable for everybody and people can sit down and enjoy themselves. So if you're thinking about going, go ahead and talk to your friends tonight and buy those tickets tomorrow, uh, so, so you can get in. And, uh, also, I want to mention one more time, um, I can't remember if it was mentioned already, but the Tree Jubilee, which has been part of the downtown parade often. Uh, it's been at the American Legion the last couple of years. The Tree Jubilee is moving to the Star Center Gymnasium. Bigger area, more size, and hopefully, the event can grow. But I know a lot of people like to stop by the Tree Jubilee, and you can, we get all these trees, like over fifty, sixty trees donated from businesses and private individuals. And it's like an auction-type situation where people bid on trees. If you're the highest bidder, you got a fully decorated lit tree to take home and throw in your house. All proceeds go to the Independence Day Parade. These proceeds go to funding the parade that everyone enjoys for the Fourth of July. So I'm just letting everybody know that it's at a new location this year, and it's Saturday only, December seventh. I don't know the time. It's probably, I'm gonna throw something out there, like, you know, noon to five or something like that. Oh, there you go. Noon to eight, ooh, I was off. Okay, noon to eight. Alright. All the vendors will be like, "No one's been here since five." Okay, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Booker. I appreciate you being on top of it a little bit more than I am, but, uh, but thank you. So yes, December seventh, noon to eight. And go buy a tree and support the parade and the members of the Independence Day Commission. With that said, I want to thank everyone for all their hard work. And we're coming up on one of my favorite holidays, Thanksgiving. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. I think one of the reasons I really like Thanksgiving a lot is it's truly an American holiday. It's our holiday, you know, and, uh, yeah, it's pretty cool. I was teaching my students the other day. I have this chart in my classroom. This is like the things that the, you know, things that came from Europe to the Americas and the things that were already here. Uh, you know, Europe brought things like, uh, apples, for example, you know? I'm telling my kids, though, you think of apples, you think, "What's more American than mom and apple pie," right? But apples came from Europe, you know? Even oranges and lemons came from overseas and a lot of different things, like, you know, the Black Death and stuff like that. But, uh, anyway, but it's one of, there's only a few things that are indigenous to North America. So when early colonial people came to North America, they're here, and turkeys. Turkey is indigenous to North America, and so are pumpkins and squash and corn. So, and, I mean, I didn't find out about cranberries. But when you think about what we eat for Thanksgiving, that's even like an American meal, too. Things that came were found here by our early settlers that they didn't bring here. So like I said, that's it for the history lesson. But, uh, enjoy your Thanksgiving, everybody. Go eat an American meal with a cornucopia. And, uh, we'll see you back here December second, Monday, and take care. We're gonna go to comments from counsel. And we're gonna start with, uh, Councilmember Shinigus.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, administration, citizens in the audience and at home. I just want to say that I am so impressed by our city. We come together in times of need and in times of plentiful. Right now, we have plenty of construction going on and a need for some holiday cheer. And I'm so pleased how all of the different categories of administration and D P W and the Economic Development Team and planning and everybody's just working together. If I missed anybody, Police Department, I know you're there, too. I'm just so impressed that we are making it happen for our citizens. You know, we are children inside. All of us want that joy and special feeling of the holiday times. And I just think it's great that we're, you know, just going above and beyond and using our imagination to create what we have as tradition and reinventing it to get through, um, our construction time. So thank you, everyone that's involved, and I wish everyone, all the citizens of Haverty Grace, a very happy Thanksgiving. And I am thankful to live here and to serve you in our community. Until next time, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shinigus. And good evening, Councilman Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff. Ladies and gentlemen, hanging out with us here, appreciate that. First of all, I just wanted to give a, a big thank you, uh, to Chief, um, for, you know, the help of his police department on a well-executed, um, Veterans Day Parade this year, D P W as well. Uh, you know, those folks were calling me days in advance to make sure that everything was on point. So I really appreciate that diligence from, um, your street crew, always. And then, uh, you know, really glad to have several of my council members and, and administration folks here, and as well as the help of Susquehanna Hose Company. Um, we had a lot of children participate this year because, uh, schools were closed completely for the day, which, um, made it a little less challenging than in years past when it was a half-day and you had to deal with the bus schedules and all that stuff and shift, um, the time of the parade. So we were able to kick it off at eleven, 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 um, which is great, and I'm really appreciative of that fact. So please make sure that you lobby your school board, uh, to, to keep, uh, Veterans Day off for the students. I really think that they get a lot more participating in the various ceremonies throughout the county, as well as, um, you know, Haverty Grace's parade. We're the only, um, district, uh, outside of Baltimore City that does a parade for Veterans Day. Uh, that's a fact that I was very proud of when we had our N C R meeting with the Legion. It's the whole region of Legions. And, uh, you know, I got the sound off about that. Everybody else is doing a ceremony at a park, and you know, that's nice and all. We do that on Memorial Day, but I'm really proud of the fact that the city of Haverty Grace leans into that day to celebrate our vets. And again, um, we had two different scout troops. We had the, uh, American Heritage Girls. We had, uh, the Meadowvale Mustangs Patriot Program participate. I mean, it must have been a couple hundred kids, and they all stopped by the Legion, uh, immediately afterward to have a meal with us. And, uh, we had our museum open, and they all took turns going in there and, um, you know, seeing the artifacts and talking to the vets and volunteers there. So really appreciative of that again. Uh, with that said, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, loosen up those belt loops a couple notches. Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say the exact same thing. I mean, you know, Independence Day is an American holiday, but many countries have an Independence Day. You know, many countries have an Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, many countries have a founding Father's Day or something of the sort. But, uh, I think we are the only ones that have such a unique, um, holiday, or at least Thanksgiving is a unique-to-us holiday. So enjoy that, spend some time with your friends and family. Trying not to talk about election stuff too much. Uh, and with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Booker.
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, citizens, directors, those who are still with us. Uh, a couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go down to the fall season of the Maryland Municipal League. It's basically just a crash course in, um, how, how to set up here and do things. Uh, I, I also, uh, Councilmember, uh, Jones was up there with me. So you get, you get a chance to, to learn a lot, um, plus actually relax and, and have a good meal. But, uh, the classes are, are, are very, very good, very educational, so, uh, I really appreciate that. I will extend, uh, happy Thanksgiving to, to everyone. Also, uh, uh, Native American Heritage Day is the day after. So, uh, if you are, i- i- if you, uh, celebrate that like I do and Councilmember Shinigus, uh, that's a special day for, for you as well. So, uh, and, uh, I'll keep my comments short. But, uh, I, I always want to extend, uh, my, my gratitude for D P W, uh, that was, and, and, uh, Haverty Grace Police, uh, like, like Councilman Robertson was saying, the Veterans Day Parade was just exceptional, and it just gets bigger and bigger. Uh, I don't know what we're gonna do next year. It's, it's gonna be even bigger than it was, uh, this year, but I'm looking forward to that. Uh, so, uh...
Depends on if Director Johnson gets her motorcycle club to finally join us or not.
Yeah, there we go. Get that three-wheeler out there and get it, even the two-wheeler. She's, she's got to it. So, uh, but, uh, but in closing, I want to thank the Susquehanna Hose Company, our modified police department, our, uh, our, our D P W, and our first responders, and our EMS crew. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booker. And good evening, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, um, fellow council members, staff, folks at home, and folks in the audience. Um, I want to, uh, also say that I had a wonderful experience in Cambridge, Maryland, at the Maryland Municipal League Conference with, um, Councilman Booker. Uh, just lots to learn and, and great to talk to other folks, um, around the state about what's happening in their counties, in their cities. And then, um, just one more thing I want to recognize, and, um, that last week, we lost Kimé Murphy Callaway. Um, I'm sorry, Callaway Murphy. And, um, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, it was such a devastating loss for the community. And that I wish, you know, give condolences to her family and to her friends. And, um, she will be missed, uh, as a resident of Haverty Grace.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. And good evening, Council President Ringsucker.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'll be real quick. So the high school football team did really well last week and not so well this past week. So, um, football season's over. That means it's time for my second favorite season, hunting season. So, uh, be careful. Lots of deer out there on the roads. I swear, every year I, I come like this close to hitting them. Occasionally, I actually do. But, um, uh, you know, they're all over, so just be really careful, uh, especially after dark. Okay? That, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. Appreciate the comments. And so, uh, we come up to item nineteen on the agenda, known as adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by the Councilmember Booker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn carries five zero and affirmative. It is now nine seventeen. Thank you very much, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you back here in two weeks.